It is seven o'clock. I'm going to call our city council meeting for Tuesday, February first, two thousand and twenty-two to order. We will start with our roll call.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Hartwick.
Here.
Councilman Housley.
Hold on.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. That will take us to agenda item three, public hearings. This evening, we have none. Agenda item four, public comment. As a notice, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be your name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. Do you have anybody? All right, this will be a first call for public comment. Anybody via Zoom unmute themselves if they're wishing to speak at public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Can you state your name and address?
Ron Martin, four oh nine Nated Drive here in Fort Atkinson. I had a question related to the borrowing that is on the agenda tonight, specifically related to the fire department replacement squad with rescue slash EMS unit. My question is, is this a replacement of an existing unit? Or is this a new unit purchase being planned for two thousand and twenty-three, which it says the borrowing would be four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? And also, is it in anticipation that the public safety referendum will be approved in April? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that? I mean, I certainly can. I can just tell you that that piece of equipment was in the capital improvements project plan for several years as a replacement. I don't know the details on the piece of equipment that it will be replacing, but it has been in the CIP for several years and it is not based on, or it does not, is not proposed in conjunction with the public safety referendum. I can get additional details to the council and Mr. Martin in the future after discussing with Chief Roush what exact piece of equipment that will replace.
Thank you. All right, this will be the third and final call for public comment. At this time, public comment is closed. Will take us to agenda item five, which was our consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of anyone council member. Items moved may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to remove item five C for a revision on the motion and approval of the minutes for the police and fire commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five C will be removed from the consent agenda. That still leaves us with the remainder of the consent agenda, five A, B, D, and E.
I move to approve the four other items of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about consent agenda items? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries.
Just a note for the public present with that police and fire commission minutes. Those are, there was just a correction that needs to be made. The clerk will make that correction. They'll come back on the next, on the next agenda for approval. There's nothing, you know, nothing wrong with what happened at the meeting or, you know, the individuals that were hired. Just the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to agenda item six, petitions, requests, and communications. We'll start with six A, which is our presentation of human services and the county corporation council crisis intervention officer of the year two thousand and twenty-one award to school resource officer Dan Hefty.
I'd like to thank you for letting us present this award or allow human services to come and present this award to one of our officers. It's an honor to always stand up and lead an agency that has the ability to brag as much as possible about their officers. They're doing great things in the community and especially on an award like this where it's all about crisis intervention and the things that we do in our community to avert crisis and to help people that are in crisis. So I'd like to introduce Kathy Colley, the director of the Jefferson County Human Services, who will present an award to one of your officers.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pump. And hello, everyone. It truly is my pleasure to present this award this evening. So unfortunately, due to the growing mental health needs across our country, law enforcement officers are all too often the first responders for mental health crises. The Crisis Intervention Team, also known as CIT, is an innovative, community-based approach to improving outcomes of these encounters. CIT promote, CIT training promotes finding solutions while reducing the stigma of mental illness, the need for force, and the involvement with the criminal justice system. The goals of CIT training are to improve officer and consumer safety and to redirect individuals from, with mental illness from the judicial system to the healthcare system. CIT programs create connections between law enforcement, mental health providers, hospital, emergency services, and individuals with mental illness and their families. Through collaborative community partnerships and intensive training, CIT outcome data shows that communication improves, mental health resources are accessed, and for those in crisis, an officer and consumer safety is improved. So in Jefferson County, Human Services has partnered with National Alliance on Mental Illness, also known as NAMI, for the last thirteen years to deliver the nationally recognized forty-hour CIT training course for law enforcement officers. The Fort Atkinson Police Department can proudly proclaim that seventeen of the department's twenty officers are NAMI-trained and certified in crisis intervention techniques. Twelve years ago, our Human Services Board created the CIT Officer of the Year Award to recognize law enforcement officers who have gone above and beyond to assist residents with mental health and substance use issues. Tonight, it truly is my honor to recognize School Resource Officer Dan Hefty with the CIT Youth Officer of the Year Award. Officer Hefty was nominated by Chief Pump, who will share with you the nomination in a moment. But first, I get to say a few more things. So I imagine all of you have had the experience in your career or your lifetime that you stumble across a rare and really exquisite connection that helps you be a better person and professional. This has been our experience with Officer Hefty. His poise, honesty, engagement, can-do attitude, sense of humor, and courage has helped us all be and want to be better people with better solutions. So I want to share some thoughts, remarks, my colleagues at Human Services, and you have a team that wants to recognize you here. Regarding Officer Hefty, the first remarks are from Laura Wagner, our intake manager. Beyond a doubt, Officer Dan Hefty is highly deserving of the CIT Officer of the Year Award. The intake unit at Human Services works with Officer Hefty very closely on a regular basis for both child protection services as well as youth justice matters. Officer Hefty is one of the most flexible, approachable, and responsive officers we have ever worked with. He is always willing to help any new way he can. He always goes above and beyond in his efforts. We can contact him at any time. Day or night for assistance, and he will always make sure that we get what we need in order to serve the families the best we can. Officer Hefty is extremely supportive of Human Services and has been a tremendous partner and advocate for the work we carry out with families. He has attended every child in crisis presentation with schools and the police department in Fort Atkinson and has helped guide and educate fellow law enforcement and school staff in carrying out protocols. Officer Hefty has a natural ability to connect with youth and families and really get to know them. He wants to do this meaningful work with families and never cast judgment. One exceptional example of this was Officer Hefty's work with the intake unit on a sex trafficking case involving an adolescent girl. Officer Hefty, he reviews his work as nine to five and even made childcare arrangements for his own family so that he could attend a needed exam with Human Services, not only to support this youth, but also to ensure the evidence was expedited for the criminal investigation. Because it was a sex trafficking case, multiple interviews had to be completed, and Officer Hefty never once complained about the need to exhaust every avenue, despite the painstaking time and effort he required. He never placed blame or judgment on this youth, and he always made her feel supported. The youth was raised to view law enforcement in a negative way, but because of Officer Hefty's support and trauma-informed approach, she herself shared that she now has a new outlook on law enforcement because Officer Hefty never gave up on her. Officer Hefty's skills, knowledge, dedication, and willingness to help others is what sets him apart and makes him so worthy of this award. And one further comment from Jess Brezer, one of our youth justice workers. I've worked with Officer Hefty throughout the years, but very closely on a unique situation. This is a very challenging case that I couldn't ask for a better law enforcement partner. As I was considering what to share, this quote came to mind as to how I see my interactions with Officer Hefty and those he serves in the community. So I quote Dr. Brené Brown, compassion is not a virtue, it is a commitment. It's not something we have or we don't have. It's something we choose to practice every day. Officer Hefty has a difficult job and one that sometimes goes without notice or praise. I would like to take this opportunity to share with you that I not only appreciate his work more than he will ever know, but also his compassion and willingness to see things through a different, different lens. Officer Hefty has been a committed partner to the department in making sure we had all the necessary resources to help this youth and the family in a very difficult time, while always putting the public safety at the top of his priorities. In doing this, it showed both sides of what officers face with every day. Oftentimes, it is difficult for the earth we serve to see both of those sides, and yet, there they are. Officer Hefty has spent innumerable hours working on this case with me, making tough decisions while always supporting the common goal of ensuring safety and encouraging this youth and the family. He chooses compassion without a doubt every day. Without the empathy he has shown, the outcome would have been very different. I believe that lives have been changed by Officer Hefty's actions and words, and I am immensely grateful to have him as a partner. Before I turn this over to the chief, I just want to finish with this. All too often, CIT programs start and end with CIT training. As the co-founders of CIT have said, officer training is one small piece of a puzzle that should include strong, sustained partnerships, program infrastructure, and systematic changes to law enforcement and mental health systems. Because of Officer Hefty and your department here in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, partnerships flourish and the best possible outcomes are found and developed for our residents. So we are immensely pleased. Anyway.
It's a really hard nomination to write because it's about a juvenile in our community who is in crisis. Therefore, I leaned on Captain Todd Schultz to write it, so I didn't have to because I knew it would be hard. So I can't take all the credit for nominating. Thank you, Todd. Due to the ongoing nature of the investigation that prompted this nomination, specific details must remain strictly confidential. Nonetheless, I nominate School Resource Officer Daniel Hefty of the Fort Exum Police Department for the Jefferson County Chiefs and Sheriff's Association two thousand and twenty-one CIT Award. Detective Hefty used his tireless work ethic, his commitment to safety of the community he serves, and his ability to work effectively with other agencies to achieve the best outcome possible under the circumstances in this situation. He uses knowledge to facilitate collaboration between law enforcement and the mental health system to work for the best outcome to this difficult situation with the number one goal of keeping the community safe. Detective Hefty took the lead in working with Jefferson County Human Services and other agencies. He maintained constant dialogue, balancing the rights of the individual with the need to keep the community safe. Detective Hefty shared information with officers who assist in developing a case and maintaining vigilance. Even with the coordinated effort between law enforcement stakeholders and Human Services caseworkers, the subject's alarming behavior escalated to a point other law enforcement agencies became involved. Officer, School Resource Officer Hefty was able to work alongside the FBI, the West Alice Police Department, the Beloit Police Department, the Milwaukee County District Attorney's Office, and the Jefferson County District Attorney's Office. So you can see the scope of this investigation. Many hurdles and roadblocks were encountered in working with other agencies, courts, and providers of service, but Detective Hefty continued to diligently work toward a successful conclusion. This case involves a subject who has been known to law enforcement for many years, and the subject's behavior continues to be very concerning even today. I make this nomination with the insistence that the facts of this case must remain confidential. I can, however, honestly say that if it were not for Detective Hefty's extraordinary dedication to the people he serves and his selfless effort, the community would be much less safe than it is currently. I respectfully request you consider Detective Daniel Hefty for this great award. So we can have Dan come up, please.
Well done, Dan.
Thank you and truly fortunate to have you on our police force.
I'm glad your family got to be here too and some of your colleagues. So it's certainly sounds like a very well-deserved honor and certainly an honor for all of us to have you in that role. So thank you.
That will take us to agenda item six B, which is our Robert Street Bridge construction update.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good evening.
I had to follow that, right? What a, what an awesome resource we have. So as all of you know, the Robert Street Bridge has been moving along in design for the, for about the past year. So I'd like to give everyone an update with the, the status of that. The project itself is a total deck replacement. So in practical terms, we're removing everything that we would drive on and replacing it. The deck is roughly a foot or more thick in places. All of that will be taken up and replaced. It will all happen at once. So as you can imagine, the, the Robert Street Bridge is going to be out of commission and closed during the duration of the project. Elements that we have that are changes and improvements in this process. The first is a dedicated left turn lane in the northbound direction. So as many of you know, this particular, this particular intersection, and in fact, as you cross through the intersection with a quick merge is challenging, especially at certain times of the day, traffic will back up all the way to near Milwaukee Street for that left turn. And I'm sure we've all been in the situation when we drive across the bridge, looking for that left turn signal ahead of us and then yelling perhaps loudly when it goes on at the very last moment. We're stuck behind the left turner. So that will be taken care of. We are coordinating signals here at Riverside Drive, as well as at Third Street. We had a, several pedestrian crashes and several vehicle crashes at Milwaukee Street, all of which stemmed from a lack of gaps in the traffic because these signals weren't coordinated. So DOT is, is making those improvements. We have decorative lighting. So the old Cobra Head aluminum lights that we've seen on the bridge today will be replaced with lighting that matches, not exactly, but very similarly to the pedestrian bridge that we have in town. And probably the most important feature, I think, from a personal standpoint, as one who lived not far from this bridge with the kids, is a parapet wall will be constructed, separating the sidewalk from the active traffic. I'm sure we've all seen scenarios where folks are walking across the bridge with young children and literally a step off the curb puts you into the path of, of active traffic. So the decorative railings will be added as well. So the bridge will, we're looking, as I described, a DOT. This is a feature in our community that at least fifty percent of our community travels over at some point during the day since we only have two bridges and we want to make it look nice. And, and so they, they have graciously accepted that challenge and provided some aesthetic improvements. And I would note that this rendering, I think Councilman Becker, you had asked for an updated rendering. It took a bit, but we do finally have one that we'll put out with these features. So the last one we had was not correct, quite the aesthetically pleasing version of some of these railings, fences, and, and the lighting.
It does look better than the chain link fence that they have.
Bit of a prison motif. So there are two detours posted for this project. As I said, the bridge will close completely to traffic. The regional detour will take traffic around Fort Atkinson on the Highway twenty-six bypass and utilize Highway fifty-nine to our south. So this would be vehicles, generally large semis and things of that nature that are simply passing through Fort Atkinson will be routed around that way. The local detour, of course, will be to our other bridge, which is Main Street. The plan for Main Street is to temporarily remove all parking on Main Street. What this will do for us is eliminate traffic congestion in this area. We, we've done a number of planning studies and modeling through here, and four lanes gives us the ability to pass all of the traffic at peak periods without creating a significant delays through the area. We will maintain all of the turn lanes that are presently out there. But again, all of the traffic will, will be removed, or I'm sorry, all the parking will be removed so that we have two lanes, two travel lanes in the northbound and the southbound directions. We have also made some management changes. So the signals through the downtown will be coordinated. There'll be smart signals, for lack of a better word, so that you will start at one end and move through the entirety of the downtown. There won't be as much of the, the stop and start characterization that we probably have all been a little frustrated with at times, and that will keep the flow of traffic moving, moving rather efficiently. We will be adding increased signage for public parking along the route. The public parking that we have downtown is indicated in those yellow boxes on the screen there. If I can, that might help us a little bit. We do have ample public parking downtown, but as we all understand, we've, we've come, become quite comfortable in parking, you know, literally a few steps away from our destination, and that will have to change a little bit during construction. We have done and begun a fairly targeted communication effort. So we reached out to all the downtown businesses, I believe, two weeks ago. We had a morning meeting introducing this scenario to them, asking for feedback. We received a fair bit of feedback, very good questions. Some of them related to river traffic during construction, others related to parking rules that might be temporarily employed to make sure that we have parking spots that are open throughout the day, all of which we're following up on. We have reached out to the school districts. They've been aware of this project and in particular, the shutdown. I'll talk about the, the reasoning for the schedule here in a minute, but they've been engaged in this for the better part of a year, as has Double Three Transportation, the bus company that they utilize. Residents have been made aware of this project. The DOT put out a call for comments some, some time ago, but I think this may be the first time that the residents are hearing about the details, and I assume this story will get picked up likely beyond tonight's council meeting and into the various media outlets. And then through traffic, those communications obviously are going to be more on the signage plan with the detours and things like that, but, but they have been thought through within the design of this, this overall project. And I should note pedestrians. So we do have, we have two non-signalized pedestrian crossings downtown, one at South Water Street and the other at North Water Street. And we do have lane markings that will, your lane paint, I guess, for lack of a better word. There'll be chevrons and signage indicating pedestrian crossings at those locations. There's not a lot that we can do there. So that does cause me some concern. There was a thought about actually putting up Jersey barriers and trying to prohibit pedestrians from crossing because as you know, when we have four lanes of traffic, stopping all four lanes to see pedestrians is a concern. However, the thought was particularly in the few weeks that we have school in session. I'm sure that all of us at that age would be happy to jump a Jersey barrier to get across a few lanes of traffic. So we decided not to put up barriers to pedestrians crossing at these locations, but instead to, to increase the signage, increase the, the road markings indicating pedestrian crossings and, and hopefully educate the public as much as we can about the, the potential hazard that could exist there with four lanes of traffic. There we go. Let's get our faces out of the way there. So the schedule for this, the contractor bids will be open on April the twelfth. Coming up here in just a couple of months, the removal of Main Street parking. So this will be a removal of all of the paint on Main Street associated with that parking. That will happen the week of May the twenty-third. School ends on June eighth, and I mentioned coordination with the school district. One of the things about this project that we, we really hammered to DOT was that we wanted it to start in the spring and not extend into the new school year, starting around Labor Day. The reason for that is that we can communicate, as any school district member will tell you very well with kids in session and parents, but once the summer comes, trying to communicate that the Robert Street Bridge might be closed for a couple of weeks coming with the new school year is challenging. So the Robert Street Bridge is required by contract to be open on August the twenty-seventh, which would be, I believe, a week before school. I didn't get a chance to see the actual school date for next, next year, but I know it's right around Labor Day traditionally. Substantial completion is the term that we use for that, and what that means is Robert Street Bridge will be open for traffic, but it could be that maybe a light hasn't been painted or a railing section needs to be secured or a few minor things need to be taken care of towards the end of the project. That is okay. We're fine with that. The, the end goal for us is to make sure that before school starts, we can have that bridge back in operational condition for traffic. So that's what's written in the contract. What would affect that schedule? Rain, floods, some material delays, but the contract will, will stipulate what those are. So some, some things perhaps, you know, like imported steel or something like that might be allowed, but concrete would not. We have concrete and copious amounts locally. And then unforeseen circumstances. So there are the, the act of God provisions in the contract. The reason that those are important is because in the schedule, in the contract, we will control the schedule with money. So that August the twenty-seventh deadline is going to be set in the contract. And on August the twenty-eighth, if substantial completion has not occurred, the contractor will be paying us for every day that they're late on that. So it's a very useful incentive to make sure that we meet that schedule and a common one, I might add, on projects like this that are, that are very time sensitive. So in summary, the week of May the twenty-third is when we're, Robert Street Bridge will be closed and will be transitioning all traffic to the Main Street Bridge under a four-lane scenario. Robert Street Bridge will be open by August the twenty-seventh. Cross your fingers. Maybe we can beat that deadline, but August the twenty-seventh is the hard deadline. Questions that may arise can be directed to me during the construction for this, and we'll put something on the city's website. Questions that may arise can be directed to me during the construction for this and we'll put something on the city's website, new website, I might add. If those of you who have had a chance to look at it recently, that will have either links to the DOT page or we'll maintain some some current links on our end. With respect to the schedule. So it'll be a big change. I wasn't around for the Main Street Bridge construction. I'm sure several of you in the room probably were. So it will probably be very similar to that. I'm I'm glad we're doing it outside of the school year. We should have about a two week overlap. With the end of school, as I think that creates the most congestion within the city at those times of the day. So are there any questions that I can answer related to this?
If am I correct in what I saw on the on the rendition of the bridge that'll be four full lanes of traffic to each direction?
That is.
For the full length of the bridge.
Correct.
I'm just curious in terms of the closure, will there be signage noting that closure date going up? Like around the area of the bridge, you know, a couple of weeks or a month or whatever it would be.
Haven't looked into that specifically, but I think I will make sure I do.
I just, I mean, I, you know, even though we know we put the information out there, I think any sort of visible reminder.
The flashing sign, you know.
Could be very helpful.
That's a great idea.
You know, reminder closure date. Just so it can be very clear that the information has been given and people were given advance notice of that. That just could probably be helpful for a lot of folks.
Certainly.
Does the barrier for the sidewalk area, is that have a rating of? Pen being penetrated or not? Or is it just mostly aesthetic to keep people from people walking through and getting out into traffic?
Yeah, no, it is. It's substantial. So all guardrails and barriers have. National Highway Safety Board specifications that they have to be built to. So this this parapet wall will in fact be a physical barrier meant to withstand. A traffic or a vehicle impact.
Cool, because it looks, it doesn't look that way from the, it looks very pleasant to look at, but it's good to know it's functional go as well.
The concrete below is the structural portion. The railings are obviously not going to stop any vehicles, but the concrete below will.
So Andy, we're looking at roughly three months of inconvenience, but what is the expected lifespan of this new Robert Street Bridge?
We should be looking at anywhere from thirty to perhaps forty years with good care and maintenance.
The northbound left turn only lane, that's left turn only period, correct? So we won't have that what we have now where you've got kind of competition to get back into the lane as the two merge to one.
Correct. That merge will go away with on the the north side of the Riverside Drive intersection where the large arrows are and everybody kind of. Falls into a tight merge there. That will go away. It'll be a single lane of traffic there.
Well, that made a green turn arrow.
A dedicated left turn arrow.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
I believe so, but I must, I must admit, I don't know that I've double checked that. But yeah, it should be a dedicated.
I'd be a little nervous about how backed up that could potentially.
Yeah.
Get without something that allows for a little more ease for those turning.
Yeah, certainly. I'll check into that, but I I'm relatively certain it does.
Andy, I mean, this very ancillary, but I I know the existing supports will remain, but the. There's really not going to be any construction underneath the bridge during this process.
No, the bridge, so there there are two components to the bridge. The abutments are on each side on the riverbank, if you will. Those are in very good shape. They are going to do some improvements, I think, to the top where. The concrete is spalled or as you and I would look at it, it's, you know, kind of chipping away and you can see the aggregate. There will be some improvements made there. But the piers themselves, which are actually in the river, are in good shape. Those are inspected. I think every it's inspected every two years, but I believe every four years they actually do an underwater scuba inspection of those. And so they do keep pretty good tabs on them and they have indicated that the superstructure of the bridge is in is in very good shape. So the deck replacement is the only thing that's needed right now.
That's good to hear.
Is is there any additional markings for Van Buren? Considering I just remember being was they had almost a footrace to get into the merge lane. And then almost immediately there was Van Buren crossing with that's not regulated any way, shape or form. Is that maintained similar to that? Other than there's no footrace to get into that.
Right. Geometrically, it will remain. I am removing the pedestrian crosswalk at Van Buren. That crosswalk comes immediately after the intersection. It's not a very safe location. It'd be much better to cross at the light at Riverside or to move up to. Sherman Avenue where we have a much more safer crossing. It's a straight sightline distance.
That's a better answer than my question, but does drive to what I was looking for. We're removing the crosswalk at Van Buren.
The not only the paint in the road, but the the ramp on either side will be removed as well.
I'm curious. So the innermost southbound lane. When that hits West Milwaukee, is that going to be a turn only into West Milwaukee? How is that going to work?
We did look at that. It is not going to be a turn only. That's not to say that it may change. That has come up in a number of discussions. Related to the traffic modeling through here. Currently, what they'd indicated was that that left turn could potentially create some challenges for merging. Because you come across the bridge in a single lane on Roberts or you you come into the bridge, I guess, if we were in our car coming into this picture. We're in a single lane at that point, and then we open up into two lanes and then would immediately drop down into a single left turn only lane at the end of the bridge. So there was some concern about it, certain traffic volumes that creates an unsafe distance to merge. So the the thought was at first, let's not put in the dedicated left turn. There is, however, some crash data that indicates that it might be needed. The contrary. Not argument, but point to that is that with the. The change in the signal timing and the communication of the signals, those gaps should be a little more prominent. So perhaps you're not waiting as long for that left turn. So I would say remains to be seen, but if I had to to put a wager on it, I'd say there won't be a dedicated left turn there as of today.
Nice job, Andy. It looks like it was a lot of thought put into what was going where, when.
Yeah, and I can't sing the praises of DOT enough on this too. We we should make sure that that they receive some accolades. They. They fast track this project and they have been phenomenal in responding to our concerns, our needs and suggestions. It's it's been a, it's been a great group to work with. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I also want to emphasize that this is going to impact every person in Fort Atkinson. So please be patient. Please slow down on Main Street, support our Main Street businesses that are down there and understand that we've worked hard. To make sure that all of our partners involved in this are aware of what's going on. So please do reach out if you have questions.
And that repairing a bridge without inconvenience is impossible.
Yes, that is extremely true. All right. Agenda item sixty is the presentation relating to the city's new interactive zoning map. And I believe we have Dan Eckberg from Vandewall and Associates online.
Yes. I'm going to go and share my screen.
Dan, we're having issues hearing you clearly.
Can you hear me at all?
Can hear you.
Okay. I will speak up then.
Dan, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, great.
I will know Brian Juarez is on the line as well. Brian was kind of in in running point on this. And I'll kind of let him introduce you, Dan, and talk a little bit about why we we decided to go this route for the zoning map.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so about a about a year ago, most of you will recall that we approached the council for some for some funding. For a project to retain Vandwall and Associates to create an interactive zoning map. That interactive zoning map was to be designed, you know, to work hand in hand with our new zoning code that we adopted. In twenty twenty and with the new zoning districts that that process created. The new interactive zoning map would be would be there to be a tool. For, you know, prospective developers, for real estate professionals and for the citizenry at large. To be able to sort, you know, through some of the different zonings. To have a better access of what the different types of zonings are, what they do, what they allow. All within one document so that you don't have to bounce back and forth as much between. You know, between different documents. Of course, it's not completely all inclusive. It can't have the entire zoning code in it. But it does have general descriptions and stuff that people can get that make it a more, you know, a more useful tool. So we retained Vandewall Associates to create this map. And we, the process is now complete. We are on budget and. Dan is here tonight to give a presentation to show you what it looks like. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thanks, Brian. Um, so here is what the user will see when they click on the link, this landing page. So this initial screen has some basic directions about how to use the map. As well as a disclaimer stating that the city can't be held liable if you're for errors in the data and so forth. And that the direction staff, every time anyone uses this map, it will be presented with the screen and. You know, I have to acknowledge that they've read it and click the okay button down here. Which brings us to the map itself. So by default, there are a few layers turned on automatically when we first access this map. Which include the city of Fort Atkinson's municipal boundary. The base zoning districts as well as some extraterritorial jurisdiction boundaries. So when I zoom in a little bit. We'll start to see some labels appear denoting the specific zoning districts. And then if I go ahead and click on one of these districts. We get a little pop up box. That lists the name of the district, a brief description of the district. So in this case, SR five. This district is intended for primarily moderate density, single family detached dwellings. At a density of five dwelling units per acre. And then down here, we have a link directly to the zoning code text. Which opens easily in the next tab. Going back to the map for a second, you'll also see right above that we have. List of the chapter of this particular zoning district. So when this. City app opens up, we can quickly search for that information and find that specific district. To get more information about it like. You said you primary use or principal uses accessory uses setbacks and so forth. And then. Zooming in a little bit more. You'll see that the parcels appear. So now we can see the individual parcel lines. So now if I click on a specific parcel, the pop up, I will get a pop up box depicting. Information about that specific parcel, the parcel number, owner name, the address. Assessment information and so forth. And then if I click on this little button right here. That says next feature, then we will also have the pop up box. That describes the specific zoning district for this particular parcel, in this case downtown historic mixed use. And again, has a specific chapter for that zoning district listed now linked to the zoning code. The zoning code text. And you may have noticed over here on the right side of the screen, there's this panel. Then also automatically opens up with some detailed directions about how to use the map. These go into a bit more detail than the directions that we saw on that first landing page screen and. Also, yeah, you know, it gives the user or it. Means the user doesn't have to memorize everything they read on opening screen. They can reference that information again. While they're using the map. And so for example, the we just went over this specific text describing how when I click on a. Feature on the map, we get a pop up box and how we can cycle through these different pop up windows. Going to the top of this about menu, we see. It describes if we click on the layer list button in the upper right hand corner, we can toggle on or off a list of. Available data layers, including zoning districts, natural resources, et cetera. So let's go ahead and do that. I'm going to click on this button up here in the upper right hand corner. And now we can see the whole list of available layers that the user can turn on or off. So the ones in blue check marks are the ones that are turned on by default when we load the map. These five up here that are not turned on are the. Overlay zoning districts for the city. So for example, I'll turn on the shoreline wetland district. You can see that outline. The floodplain district. The sewage treatment facility overlay, which I think is at the south end of the city, all down there and we should be able to see that. Yeah, there it is down here. And so forth. And then down here, we actually have a few. Data layers from the city's comprehensive plan that were added at the request of staff, including. For future land use outside of the city limits. And the long range urban growth area for the city. So I'm going to go ahead and turn that on for a quick reference. And just so it's easier to see, I'm going to turn off the base zoning for a minute. And as you can see, as I'm viewing this, the legend on the left side of the screen automatically updates to. Show whichever specific layers I have turned on or off. And then going back to that about menu for a second. On the second key part of this. Box describes how we can use this map to filter. The display for to only depict specific zoning districts if we would like. So as it says, click the filter button in the upper right hand corner, second from right. So I'll go ahead and do that. And when I do that. I'm presented with a menu that says zoning district is. And if I click on this dropdown menu, it'll give me a list of all of the city's base zoning districts. And I'm going to go ahead and select one. And you'll see it automatically zooms in to depict this. Those. That particular zoning district. And all the other zoning districts are turned off and I can quickly switch to another district if I like and it'll zoom into that one. And if I want to reset this view.
Dan, this is this is Andy Sully, the city engineer. We're kind of having some challenges hearing you. But we we've seen, I think we've seen quite a bit of this on our side of things and and I know Brian, you and I get calls all the time. From folks wondering, well, where are the R one parcels or the residential parcels? Are they vacant? Can we find locations that are suitable for commercial development? These, this map will put that information in their hands. So once they finish talking to us. Obviously, they don't remember everything that they've heard from us. They'll be able to go to this site and navigate around. And we're hoping really kind of build their knowledge base of how, what properties are available in Fort Atkinson and and how our zoning. Might affect their their future plans. Brian, do you know? When is this going live if it hasn't already? And is it available on the website?
Yeah, I believe there's already a tab for it on the website and yeah, it's ready to go. So we can, we can make that live at any time. In fact, it may be right now. I'd have to ask Sarah about that, but I know she was all ready for it and had it had it ready to go. To add to what you were saying, Andy, I think that 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 ability to sort and filter. Is a really nice feature for for people because especially prospective developers and stuff. You know, they want to be able to, if they know they want to build, you know, three units or four unit homes or or buildings. They have the ability to get in there immediately and and find out where that zoning exists around the city. And the fact that it can be coupled with the overhead views, it can show them if it happens to be a vacant lot or if it's a lot that already has a building on it. They can see that 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 becomes more and more important to the city in the future as we try to, you know, to to do more infill projects. Where we're trying to to use up the existing properties and stuff that are that are vacant within the city itself. So it has a lot of value to to developers, real estate professionals or to to. Um, so it, it has a lot of value to um, to developers, real estate professionals, or to, to individuals who might be wanting to try to search for something like that. Um, so I, I think this will, will be a good tool uh for them to have uh for that purpose.
I will also note that this map is live. There was a link in the memo in your packets, uh, and it is available on the city's website.
Yeah, I apologize for the technical difficulties. I'm not sure if you can hear me or not, but um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, if so.
Looks like there are none. So uh, thank you very much, uh, Dan, um, for, for walking us through that and uh, we uh, I know Brian and I and, and hopefully uh. The rest of city staff and, and council are uh, are excited to see where, where this takes us. And, and it's something that we can add information to. Uh, as we, as we realize, um, getting that out to the public in a map form is important.
I do have one question for Andy. In, in this, does it incorporate any possibility of, or maybe I missed it, but. If you were looking for something zoned a certain way to put a certain kind of business in it. Does it also give you the ability to pick out where those properties are open or available?
It, it doesn't show uh properties that would be open or available. What you would do in that situation is look at the aerial uh map, which is, I believe, twenty twenty. Yes. So you'd be, see if there's a structure on there or not. That would be the way you'd realize if it was a vacant lot or not.
I was mostly thinking like, say, downtown businesses where it's say, this is a vacant star. Oh, zone correctly.
Yeah, I, that I, I don't think you'd be able to with the map. That's not to say we couldn't figure out a way to add something like that if it became an important feature. And that, that's the beauty of this GIS is we just simply call Dan and say, hey. We need to put a tag on vacant, you know, vacant uh structures or businesses or whatever the, the case may be.
Oh, we just think it'd be a cool feature for somebody to come to Fort and say. Geez, I'd like to have a business in maybe downtown. It's, it's not only is it zone right, but here's three spots that are open.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, one thing I would add briefly is that, yeah, this map is, you know, sort of a living map. It's flexible. We wanted to add additional layers that would, yeah, that would be very possible or edit or remove or update existing layers or. Um, even like the text that we're looking at. That's all very um flexible and easy to update.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know if this is for Andy or Dan, do, um, do many of the other communities around us already have this? Or are we kind of one of the uh early adopters of this?
Actually, Brian can answer that. He did a, a fair bit of research at uh, at other, of other communities, similar sites.
Yeah, this is a, this is becoming a pretty common phenomenon now. It would, it's not, we're uh, we're not leading the way here, but um. We, we did research a lot of other communities and, and Whitewater and uh, you know, uh, East Troy and McQuanago and all these different places that, that have these maps, Water Town and. Uh, there's lots of them out there. They're a lot, they have different features. And part of what we did when we, you know, gave Vandewall instruction as to what we really wanted. Was we, we looked at all of those and we decided what features were really important to us, what ones we thought would be very beneficial for the city. Um, and that's how we kind of gave direction to Vandewall when they uh, for the creation of this map. So. Uh, yeah, there are, there are quite a few of these out there. They're, they're getting more and more common.
That's great. I'm glad we're jumping on board. I think this is going to be really valuable for buyers, realtors, developers, um, lots of different people, I think they'll. They will utilize this. That's great.
Any other questions from our council? Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
That takes us to agenda item six D, which is the presentation relating to the twenty twenty-two note anticipation. Note and general obligation refunding bonds in the amount of two million two hundred seventy-five thousand. And we have Justin Fisher from Baird with us this evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Great to see everyone in person. It's been, it's been a while, so I, I'm glad to be here, uh, presenting here tonight in person. So really to kind of give a recap of what's been going on, on over the last six months, been working with Rebecca, Michelle, Andy, kind of. Getting the overall capital improvement list put together. Um, so they've been working hard on getting that. Uh, put together and, and really looking at the different projects, the amounts, the different useful lives of the projects, and then ultimately coming up with a. A plan of finance, a strategy that, that accomplishes the goals to get you the funding when you need it and to be. Uh, you know, also strategic in the standpoint of trying to minimize cost of issuance and, 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 and other ways that I'll go through in this presentation. So if you go to page two of the presentation, um, what, what this really does is it's a two-step process and this is what we. Did back in twenty nineteen when we did the fire station project. Um, it's, it's kind of the no anticipation note followed by general obligation refunding bonds. And then many of you were, were, you know, around and remember that process. And the, the reason for this process is really a state statute stand is a, a legal thing. Because of the, there's a variety of different capital projects in the capital borrowing list. Like equipment or different useful lives under ten years. State statutes require those to be done ten years or less. Otherwise, you'd have to go through a referendum process. That's not, you know, necessarily a good use of money, time, et cetera. Um, so the other way to do this is to borrow for those projects on a, um, a note basis, meaning ten years or less. The, the city also has capital projects that have useful lives beyond ten years, such as some of the road projects. So what we, what we said is, well, you can do one issue being ten years or less. And the total projects for that is, say, around a million dollars. The other projects with useful life beyond ten years is right around a million dollars. Doesn't make sense to go to the, the public market with two million dollar issues, pay two sets of costs of issuance. And, 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 you know, have that size that's pretty small for each one of those issues. You probably wouldn't get necessarily the best interest rates uh in the market if you did that. So a strategy here to reduce it from two public offerings down to one public offering is to do. A short-term interim financing, meaning doing a note less than ten years. In this case, it'll be less than, it'll be one year essentially. But we'll probably take it out in the next couple of months. It's essentially an interim vehicle to get to one long-term financing. And, and then I'll show you how with that long-term financing, we break it internally into the projects. That have a useful life of ten years or less will amortize that ten years. And the projects that have a useful life beyond ten years will amortize that over ten years into a twenty-year. So it's going to be one borrowing, one public offering essentially, um, when it's all said and done. So the first one, again, no anticipation note in the amount of two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is going to fund the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three levy, general fund projects, equipment. Um, and, and water utility type projects. So it's taking the next two years essentially of capital projects and. You know, when we looked at that again, it was, what are interest rates going to do between now and next year? Do we try to do borrowing this year and then do the remaining next year? You know, kind of the thought is, well. You, you, you turn on the news, you, you hear about inflation, you hear about, you know, you see the interest rate slowly increasing, et cetera. Um, the thought is, with, with this size, let's, let's just do all it at once, get the size to be a little bit larger. A little bit more marketable and, and try to get the best interest rates that we can right now, when we're still in this historically low interest rate market. So this would mature March one or March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three for its interest. March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three and callable June twenty-second of twenty twenty-two. The estimated interest rate, one point two five percent. So, you know, keeping it on the short end really gets you the, the lowest interest rate. And, and what we're going to do, just like we did in twenty nineteen. It's going to be bid out to local and national banks. So getting the local banks involved, uh, seeing if they come in, you know, premier uh badger, et cetera. They've, they've been. Uh, big purchasers of the city's debt in the past. We hope to see them, uh, you know, come in again. Then, when we're ready, you know, the bids are, are in good shape. Um, we're also in position to enter the bond market because we're going to go through the bond rating process. Uh, put together an official statement. Again, that's like the stock, like for a stock prospectus, it contains all the financial information about the city. That's going to be sent out to potential purchasers, investors, for them to make an educated decision on if they want to, you know, submit a, a bid to purchase your bonds and at what interest rate. So that's going to be taking place over the next several months. But the general obligation refunding bond, this is just refinancing, no anticipation note, and this is going to be the twenty-year financing. So that first interest payment is February one of twenty twenty-three. So the first interest payment is not going to be this year on the debt. The first interest payment is going to be next year in twenty twenty-three. And that will be callable February one of twenty twenty-nine or any date thereafter, meaning that on that particular day, you can refinance it. Uh, you can pay it off. Uh, you have flexibility at that particular point. And the estimated interest rate for that is a three percent. Again, that, that's, that's conservative. Uh, you've seen it in the past. I, I like to be conservative in my planning estimates. And then when we go to the mo- bond market, you know, because I can't control that, um, you know, come in much better hopefully than, than what we're projecting. So, again, the, the tentative timeline here would be to consider the plan of finance and set sale resolution tonight. Uh, city council would consider the NAN award resolution and the initial resolution for the general obligation refunding bonds on March first. And then the NAN closing would be March twenty-second of twenty twenty-two. So on that particular day is when you'll receive the money, the two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We'll go through the, the processes like I just talked about with the first statement and reading. And then May seventeenth to twenty twenty-two is when we anticipate going into the market to lock in the long-term uh twenty-year financing. And closing that June seventh to twenty twenty-two. So let's take a look at page three. There's a lot of numbers on this page, so I won't go through. And expect you to understand everything that's going on here, but I'm going to try my best, walking you from the left side of the page to the right side. So the left side of the page, that's the existing debt service, levy-supported debt service for the city on an annual basis. So you can see that when you're looking at this, it has a nice drop in the debt service come twenty twenty-four. So thinking through, that's our existing debt. Now we have this, this debt we're talking about tonight. Then we're also thinking about Rebecca, myself, Michelle. We're thinking about what other projects does the city have down the pipeline, not just this year and next year? What do you have in three years, five years, et cetera, that we need to start planning for now? So when the time comes, the city's in good position to. To, to take on those projects and not have such a large increase to the debt service or, or mill rate. So that's stuff that we're thinking about right now, but this is really a snapshot of what it looks like uh with just this borrowing. So in the middle of the page, that's the, the, the uh, the general obligation refunding bond of two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Which you can see just to the right of that, I have it laid out as ten years levy-supported, twenty years levy-supported. So that's like the equipment-type projects being amortized over that ten-year period. The, the street-type projects being amortized over the twenty period and as well as the water utility projects. When you look a little bit further to the right side, there's a combined debt service levy support. And as you can see, we're having that jump up over the next two years because again, this borrowing, the first interest payment. Hits in twenty twenty-three. We're not going to be doing a borrowing in twenty twenty-three for first principal, first interest payment in twenty twenty-four. So we need to start thinking about also not only twenty twenty-three, but twenty twenty-four. So that's why you can see that there's a jump in there because. What we're planning for right now is we know that the city also has a public works project on the horizon. And we're getting in, we're getting in position for that now. So when the time does come. Um, you're able to take on that project and again, not have such a large increase to the debt service. So kind of getting in, you know, getting ready for those future projects at the same time as what we're doing right now. So the last page, this is really a visual to give you comfort. You've seen this in the past. I, I presented this. Um, but really what this does is it takes, the black bars is the existing debt service. For, for the city, that's all your general obligation debt on a principal basis. The blue bars, that's what we're talking about tonight. So you can see how it stacks on top. After this borrowing, this for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the city will have still remaining about forty million dollars in. General obligation available bonding capacity. And for you that don't remember, um. Municipalities are allowed to borrow five percent of your equalized valuation. That's kind of the max that you, you can borrow. Well, the, the city's valuation is about a billion one. So you can think, you know, we have over fifty million dollars, fifty-five million dollars that is available for us to borrow. Obviously, we don't want to get near that and the city has policies in place to, to protect you, us from that. But it still shows that even after this, you're going to have seventy percent remaining capacity at your disposal. And then factoring in these hypothetical future uh projects like the public works and so forth. That's really the potential twenty twenty-four borrowing, which you can see is the green bars. And then future CIP thereafter is a yellow bar. So we, we, we've got a good plan, not only this year, but going forward. That really puts the city in a good position from a, a borrowing standpoint and, and, and because of this, you know. And, and keeping the financial strong, I, I only anticipate that the, the city continues to maintain strong bond credit rating going forward.
So this is probably kind of a dumb or a silly question, but something I've never really thought about before in my. Times looking at this, the, the call dates that are on, on here under the, the notes. How, how often does that situation occur? I guess I can't recall it coming up previously.
Well, actually, this is, this is, that's a great question because what we did in, um, it would have been end of twenty twenty. Early twenty twenty-one, we actually refinanced a few of the issues that the city had outstanding. That was at a higher interest rate into lower cost debt and it saved the, the city. And Michelle, you may recall, I can't remember off the top of my head how much that saved the city, but. It wa- it was, it was a nice amount that it.
Yeah, I recall that now, yeah.
So it, it does, um, you know, obviously, you know, past few years, we, we were in such a low interest rate environment. Is it going to be refinanced? I, you know, I can't say, but it, it's nice to have the flexibility because. You know, I would have never thought what happened these past couple of years would have happened. And which drew interest rates down so much, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the future.
Good. No, that's good. I appreciate that.
Justin, can you tell uh us a little bit about what exactly the resolution uh on the agenda tonight, what that does? A- and if there's still any flexibility at this point with the types of projects and the uh amount of borrowing?
Yes, gr- great question. So, so tonight it just basically uh gives authority to move forward with uh doing the no anticipation note. Uh, what this, but it, it doesn't lock us into the uh two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If bids come in between now and when we go to lock in the interest rate for the, the anticipation note. If they come in less, we can, we can reduce that no anticipation note. So in March first, you know, if, if you go out for bids and it comes into two million one hundred thousand. That's what we'll, we'll essentially be borrowing for. So it gives a lot of flexibility in that aspect.
And do we anticipate all of those bids would be received before the council would be making a final decision on that at the March first meeting?
We won't have all of them, but we will have, um, we will likely have the annual street construction reconstruction program, uh, that information as well as. The um, single axle dump trucks uh or plows. And why, why that is significant to is, um, we have an estimated amount, um, that is from the CIP. That estimated amount may or may not be accurate at this point because of the changes in supply chain and vehicles and that, that, things of that nature. So. If we had to um forego a different piece of equipment such as the transit van, um, it, because the um dump trucks were more expensive. We would still have that flexibility to do that type of thing.
So we wouldn't potentially be looking at increasing this number based on bids? Okay.
Correct.
And you would adjust the ability later down the road, even before we do the general obligation refunding bonds. If, if, you know, you come in and say, well, bids actually are now a hundred thousand dollars. We can just take. The excess money that you have sitting and apply that to reduce the long-term borrowing amount. So you'll have flexibility for the next several months for you to, you know, get those bids.
If you were comparing the city of Fort. To other similar-sized cities in Wisconsin, would we be looking average, above average? It's excellent.
I would say for a city your size, you would be, uh, I would say abo- above average, um, from, from many aspects. Um, especially from a debt borrowing standpoint, you're, you know, a lot of communities your size or are closer. You're, you know, a lot of communities your size are are closer to, you know, half, using half your capacity or more at this particular point. So.
So so we would, in essence, be stable in in many ways that would suggest that we're prepared for other things that might come, but we're also in a great shape.
Yes, this the city has good fund balance, good policies in place. The the city has an outstanding double A minus rating, which is one of the strongest bond credit ratings you can receive. So yes, you you've you've done everything you can from your standpoint to to get the best rating and and interest rates possible. So yes, I you are doing very well, should be very proud as a council.
And if I remember correctly, when I, when you've been before us and you talked about our double A, our rating. To actually get above that would require that we were a much larger place with much larger incomes to play with.
The incomes. That that's a big driver of what S and P is looking at is is the, yeah, the median family income levels in the area and so forth. Not necessarily the size of the community. It's more that area now, if the if the city went, you know, wild and and really increased your fund balance to levels that were so high that, you know, above seventy five percent of, you know, expenditures. Well, then you might get an increase in your rating. But, you know, that that probably won't happen. So, yeah, you're 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 maxed out pretty much where you can be right now.
I have two questions on the capacity chart.
Yeah.
The first one being, and I know it says hypothetical, so I'm assuming so for two thousand and twenty two showing the seventy percent remaining for capacity. Is that assuming this two point two seven five borrowing? Like, is that already taking that number into account in here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then do we have, I mean, is there an internal city policy of we really don't like to go above this percent for that, for what's available?
Yeah, our internal policy is sixty percent of our capacity.
Okay.
So our capacity is at five percent of the equalized value.
Yeah.
And then our internals capacity or our internal limit is sixty percent of that capacity.
Okay. And then I guess my only other question is, so just kind of showing obviously the progression through two thousand and forty four. But I don't, am I understanding correctly, though, there would still be potential for other years of borrowing in there, correct?
Yeah, the the yellow portions are all future borrowing.
Oh, the future CIP is future.
Yep.
Yellow and green.
Okay. Yeah, yellow and blue and green.
I'm like, well, but we're going to borrow eventually in the future.
Okay. So that that black is that existing principle that we're paying down over time. And then with, and I think the the good thing that this chart shows us is trying to remain relatively consistent at our level of debt, which remains relatively consistent with the impact on the tax levy.
Yeah, and this this assumes a one and a half percent growth factor to your equalized valuation. You know, his last several years, you've exceeded that quite a bit. But, you know, I do remember times two thousand and nine through twelve where we didn't see any increases and we actually saw decreases. So, you know, again, being being conservative in these projections and hopefully they come out better and you have more capacity than what I'm showing here. But this this really just give a conservative projection.
Thank you.
I have to say, I always love this presentation. This is one of my favorite charts to see. And I wish I could share it with the people online. Just because it shows how consistent we've been to be good stewards when it comes to our debt capacity and our debt borrowing. And a lot of that starts with just how diligent we are with budgeting and going through through that entire process to make sure we only borrow for what we truly need to borrow for. So. Yeah, I love seeing this.
Are we able to have this available digitally?
Yes, we have it, and and I apologize, it was an error that it was not included in the packet. It was meant to be included in the packet, but there it was not. So we can make that available to the public through our website. We can do that, we'll do that tomorrow.
Be a nice thing to link to if there are questions or or concerns from residents about borrowing levels.
Thank you. There's any other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That will take us into agenda item seven, which is resolutions and ordinances. And that will start with seven A, which is the review and possible action relating to a resolution providing for the sale of approximately two point, wow, two million, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the note anticipation note, which we just went over.
Great, so in your packet, you have a memo that outlines more specifically the projects that we are intending to purchase or you know, equipment planned to purchase or projects that we are planning to undertake in two thousand and twenty. Those are all items that were included in the city's adopted two thousand and twenty two budget document. And specifically, those were included under the borrowing section of that two thousand and twenty two document as far as funding goes. So those items include the police department squad car, our lawman site remediation and demolition. That is a gap funding, our annual street reconstruction program, which is also gap funding. The Robert Street Bridge construction, recall that that is a DOT project and there's only a portion that is the city's responsibility. Our public works operations equipment, including two single axle dump trucks, a skid loader and the transit van with a water tank. And then the items in planned for two thousand and twenty three are also in here, they those were identified in the two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty seven CIP. Those projects, most of, I think all of them actually were identified prior years in the CIP, but pushed due to lack of funding. So these were things that were are included in that budget document for two thousand and twenty three, including another squad car. Whitewater Avenue Mill and overlay the city portion of that DOT project. And then Fire Department replacement of squad with the rescue EMS unit and equipment hoses and the PPE dryer for the fire department. And then a flatbed truck replacement for the Parks Department. Okay, so we have in the memo, you have the total cost of those things and those S, those are estimated costs. And the total is that two point two seven five million dollars. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would recommend that the city council adopt the resolution providing for the sale of approximately two hundred two million, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in this note anticipation note.
I'm just curious if any department has given any feedback about if they anticipate any of these being significantly higher than initially thought when they were doing the CIP, just given the current state of things.
Yeah, we have not had specific discussions on all of these things and where where they might be moving. However, as as Justin indicated, we do have some flexibility still with with some of these, especially equipment projects that we could, some could go away if bids come in high. But we likely, we, I mean, we wouldn't add anything at this point if bids came in exceptionally low.
I will move to adopt the resolution providing for the sale of approximately two million, two hundred and seventy five thousand note anticipation note.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Hi.
Councilman Hartwick?
Hi.
Councilman Housley? Councilman Housley?
Sorry, I.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
President Shear?
Hi, that motion carries. Agenda item seven B is the second reading of an ordinance to amend sections forty two dash thirty six and forty two dash thirty seven of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Uh, thank you, this is the second reading of this ordinance. As a reminder, it has two sections to it. It makes the following changes. The Historic Preservation Commission would make recommendations to the Plan Commission instead of the City Council. It requires three members to reside in the city and the remaining two members may reside up to twenty miles outside the city, provided that each member works within the city, owns property within a historic district in the city or owns a locally designated landmark property within the city. It changes the membership terms from five years to three years and allows each member to serve up to the three year term. The second section of the ordinance clarifies that the Historic Preservation Commission must review a project and issue a certificate of appropriateness for exterior changes to a building or property in a that is in a locally designated district or a landmark. And it clarifies HPC's role in the special area design review process for properties within that downtown historic mixed use zoning district. Let's see, we do, the ordinance committee reviewed this on January eleventh. The city council reviewed this and performed a first reading on January eighteenth. The Historic Preservation Commission also reviewed this, I believe, at their meeting in January. And staff does recommend that the city council perform the second reading tonight and direct this myself to prepare it for the third and final reading on February seventeenth. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I see that Merrily is also on the Zoom if you have questions for her.
The only thing I just wanted to clarify is it does say under like financial analysis that you can't yet quantify what the staff time, the increase in staff time would look like for this. Is that anything you have any concern about for your team or what the financial impact of that would be for the city?
I I don't have a concern at this point. If if we start. One of the reasons I don't have a concern is because we we did limit, and I didn't mention this, but I I think we've talked about it before, under section two of the memo on on the second page, I should say, the memo, we did exempt structures built within the last fifty years within the downtown historic mixed use zoning districts from the requirement that HPC review and and provide a recommendation to the to the Plan Commission. And the goal of that was that it's a relatively large district that downtown historic mixed use district has a lot of parcels in it and potentially there could be a lot of projects that the Historic Preservation Commission would have to review. But so that that is why we put that fifty year date in there. And then also, we do intend to develop a fee structure that provides an appropriate fee for the, you know, that is in line with the cost of what it costs us to review this. These types of documents that fee was not put into place with the zoning ordinance. We will include it in the two thousand and twenty three fee resolution after we've been able to do an analysis of of how much time it actually may take for us.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I move to direct the city manager to prepare this ordinance for a third and final reading at the city council meeting on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item seven C is the second reading of an ordinance to amend section fifty eight dash one forty eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the sale of tobacco, nicotine products, electronic smoking devices and electronic smoking device paraphernalia near schools.
Just to give an update, I have not received any feedback directly or reviewed any publicly that I think deserves discussion. So I'm hoping that we still have support of the city council in the forward.
I don't see a downside. Um, I will jump in, I move to direct the city manager to prepare this ordinance for a third and final reading at the city council meeting on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Seven D is the second reading and possible third final reading of an ordinance to amend section ninety four dash three thirty two of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to zoned and posted speed limits.
Yeah, thank you, I I too have not received any feedback on this since its last presentation to council. And as I did note in our last meeting, I I would prefer to move this through to the third reading this evening if if council felt comfortable doing so.
I don't have any problem with that, I think, you know, the we reviewed this last time, I'm assuming staff hasn't heard anything about this one way or the other. I'll go ahead to move it to suspend the rules and waive a third reading of this ordinance to reduce the speed limit on Baker Road.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries.
With that.
Yeah, go ahead, Mason.
Okay, with that, I will move to adopt the ordinance amending section ninety four dash three three two of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code to reduce the speed limit on Baker Road from forty five miles per hour to thirty five miles per hour.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, again, any discussion? This one will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Hi.
Councilman Hartwick?
Hi.
Councilman Housley?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
President Shear?
Hi, that motion carries you now. Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards and committees, eight A is the city manager's report.
Thank you. The city's Economic Development Commission met on the twenty eighth, which was Friday, and approved documents associated with the capital catalyst revolving loan fund. The Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium will serve as the city's consultant for this program, including working with individuals on the application and proposal, as well as working with an underwriter to perform the necessary financial analysis of an application. We'll be sending out a press release this week when the documents and contact information is all finalized. I will note that there is six hundred thousand dollars in this loan fund to loan out. A maximum loan amount is one hundred thousand dollars or thirty percent of the project cost. So there is some some significant money in this fund to be loaned out. So I hope we are successful in finding some high quality applicants. I also wanted to congratulate Officer Happy on his award tonight. And I would also like to commend Chief Bump for creating a culture in the police department that promotes the importance of crisis intervention training. When officers and command staff can recognize a situation as a mental health crisis and deploy appropriate intervention methods and resources. Everyone in our community benefits from that safety, so thank you, Chief Bump. I also want to congratulate dispatcher Sue Ebert and Police Captain Jeff Davis on their retirements. Both are celebrating their last days this week. We're proud of their commitment to public service and to the city of Fort Atkinson. We will recognize them more formally at a city council meeting within the next month or so as their new lighter schedules permit. So we'll reach out and get those scheduled, we have their plaques already set for them. Uh, finally, we're working with our auditors to wrap up our expenditures and revenues from two thousand and twenty one. Further financial data and our year end reports will be presented within the next month or so. Just want to give you an update on that. The career fair at the high school was canceled last week, but it has been rescheduled to April. So the city intends to have a table on that, we'll send out some information again to try and get additional interest. And that is all I have today.
Perfect, thank you. Agenda item nine, unfinished business, this evening we have none. Agenda item ten, new business, this evening we have none. Agenda item eleven, miscellaneous, this evening we have none. Agenda item twelve, claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve the list of verified claims and authorized payment.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Hi.
Councilman Hartwick?
Hi.
Councilman Housley?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
President Shear?
Hi, that motion carries. Agenda item thirteen, the city council may consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties.
Move to adjourn it into closed session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and just as a notice, we will not be coming back into any open session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Hi.
Councilman Hartwick?
Hi.
Councilman Housley?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
President Shear?
Hi. With that, we are turned into closed session.